Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. I am now calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Ms. Mattson.
Here.
Ms. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. We now move on to the communication, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. I would just like us all to keep the families of the following residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Jamie Baye, Frances Isles, Samantha King, Mr. Tori Summerford Senior, Sabrina Harvey, Kimberly Fields, Lily Norris, and Bladell Smith. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible, to the United States of America, to the Constitution, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now move on to communications. We have nine seats. We move on to courtesy of the floor. At this time, anyone who would like to speak to City Council, please do so. Please come to the mic. I'm starting at my right.
Good evening, Council. Pam Parson, Holly Street. First of all, congratulations to Councilperson Daniels and Green on being re-elected to council and also to President Williams in being elected mayor. I feel like our long nightmare is over.
Thank you.
That aside, a couple of things. One is, I would like to remind you all, as Ms. Rafika Mohammed asked me to do, that there is a walk-through uptown tomorrow at 3:00 with the state's environmental justice folks. We'll be meeting at 3:00 in the parking lot of the Fair Housing Council. And this is to walk through the neighborhood, look at dumping sites and other particular and other environmental hazards. Probably there'll be another one scheduled for the Hill at some point. I don't think we'll be able to get it in all in tomorrow. I'd also like to just draw your attention to the fact that this is November. We are late in the final quarter of the year, and we have not seen the police commissioner. And at this point, I think we are not one but two reports behind. I clearly remember the last time he was here, which was before council hiatus. It might have been May or June. And I remember Councilman Major saying, "Do we have to give you a date to show up? Well, maybe you do." And finally, I know that on your agenda tonight is an appointment to the zoning hearing board. I am well aware that the zoning hearing board is down a person. However, I would like to ask you to not approve the, what is it? Autumn, yes, Autumn Anderson. My reason for this being is that that means that on the zoning hearing board, you have three people from Midtown. So you are lacking both neighborhood diversity and racial diversity. That also means that everyone currently serving on the board is white. Thank you.
Thank you. Any?
I would just make one comment if I could, President Williams.
Yes, you can.
We did receive an email from the police department with the police report. I did make sure we'll send to all council members, excuse me, as well. And I did reach out to the commissioner, asking for him to come just to present it to the public. But we did receive one via email.
And then also to that point, I'll note that is also on the city's, on the police website. We've been in contact with the police department, and it is posted to their site. And they actually, what they didn't have before was a date, and they put a date on it, so we know that it's for the third quarter. So that information.
Because I come here and I was listening for it, I didn't think to look there. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, please.
Hi, Laura Harding, 2246 North Third Street. I would also like to congratulate the reelection of our two council members and our mayor-elect, Ms. Williams. I'm very happy. I would like to echo what Pam said about the appointment for the zoning hearing board. I agree with all her sentiments, and I won't repeat those. But I do think that it is pertinent that we have membership on these boards from our underrepresented, underserved neighborhoods, and that since we have a mayor-elect, it should be up to our mayor-elect to appoint who she wants on the board in the future. In addition, also, I was going to talk about the DEP meeting with Rafika tomorrow. There will be county commissioners there. We hope that some of you will attend. I will be there as well. With respect to the beach, the bathhouse, several members of our community, myself included, and Pam was there at the protest. It was terrifying. There are people parking directly in front of the bathhouse, which, and next to the playground, instead of in the large parking lot. And there were signs that it's permitted parking only in some of those areas. We witnessed two toddlers walk across the street to use the porta potty with their mother. And when exiting the porta potty, one of those toddlers was, could nearly hit. I mean, there's, and this was when it was still light out. So there needs to be safety measures in place. The lighting is terrible. I don't know why people are parking there next to the playground when those parking spots should be for mothers who have strollers or have little babies that, you know, maybe, or handicapped people who need to use those parking spaces. But it was absolutely ridiculous. And I hope now that the election is over, some further action will be taken to investigate this.
I guarantee you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left, I mean, my right, please? Anyone in the middle?
Yes, good evening. My name is Melanie Cook. I'm a resident of the city of Harrisburg. First, I want to congratulate those of you who have run for office successfully. And please know, we look forward to a change of attitude in this city. I'm here for a number of reasons. One, I will speak in support of the previous speaker. I will be attending the DEP walk-around meeting, but this will not be the first time that there have been meetings where citizens and other officials have walked through the city with respect to illegal dumps. There are a number of short dumping sites throughout the city, and they remain there year after year after year. I spent five years as litigation counsel for the Department of Environmental Protection, which is not two miles outside this city. And I know full well the extent to which they police this conduct in other communities. And the question is, and the question this council should be asking, is why are there so many clear violations within the city of Harrisburg? One after another, after another, after another. And it is about time that there is some organized method of dealing with this. One of the things that I've come before the board to ask is that with the new administration, that there be set public meetings to discuss certain issues. An illegal dumping and hazardous waste site in the city of Harrisburg, I almost said Philadelphia, falling back to my DA days. It is, it is something that has to be identified. There has to be a strategy to deal with the issues in the city. We cannot just come to public meetings and have a brief discussion, even if it goes on the record, and have there be no strategy to deal with these issues. So I will be at the meeting tomorrow. I do hope some of you will be able to make it, even though it's at 3:00, which makes it possibly somewhat of a difficult time. Another issue that needs to be addressed via public meetings and a consistent pattern to resolve the issue is the parking situation in the city of Harrisburg. Last week, I attended the unveiling of a mural painted by a very talented local black artist. After that, I went to HMAP on North Third Street. At 10 minutes after 6:00, apparently, my car was ticketed. First of all, I'd like to know what is going on in that area of North Third Street that even requires parking meters? A two-hour limit on parking, perhaps? But parking, which I understand is going up to $4 an hour, that goes until 7:00 at night? Anyone who has lived or worked or visited other cities knows that there is a reasonable cutoff time with respect to parking. And all along that corridor of North Third, there are businesses that are trying to launch. And how do they do that if their customers or clients can't come in without risking the possibility of getting a $30 ticket? And when you get the ticket, try calling to find out how you pay it, if it won't let you pay it online. I spent all day calling five and six times, leaving various messages, and never succeeded in getting a call back until I finally called for the sixth or seventh time and got a person. So the structure of the parking is just beyond anybody's ability to understand. Questions I have, does the city get any of the money that is collected on the tickets? Can the city set the locations for the meters? Does the city set the time that the meters are in effect? What power do you as council and will you as mayor-elect have to change these policies in a way that does not impede the ability of people to come to Midtown? It's called Midtown for a reason. It does not belong to an island of people who happen to live within the geographical area. It belongs to everybody in this city, and everybody should be able to come to Midtown without fear of having to spend $30 or $50 to support something that everybody in the city should be supporting. Another issue, the decision by a two-member zoning board to approve a housing project in that very area. What do the regulations, what do the ordinances or whatever in effect that determine the number of people who are on any city board or committee? How do two people get to make a decision that is that critical to the overall health and well-being of a city and particularly that neighborhood? I recall when Second Street Quarter Project, the mayor, the city, had two or three or more meetings where everybody was brought together. There were full presentations. People were allowed to speak. People were allowed to comment. It appears as if you were only afforded the right to weigh in on what the city is doing if you live in certain areas. And the effort to make that same ability available to everyone to discuss issues in their community does not seem to be there. And finally, and I've had a number of people say, well, you know, raise this issue. A property on Cameron Street that sells for under $600,000, the exact same price for which it was purchased in 2018, three or four months later, sells for $12.8 million. That is a property that the city, no doubt, continues to be subject to pain based on the mysterious set of circumstances that led to the property being sold to someone who couldn't develop it. How the city got on the hook for that, I still don't understand. But whether or not the city feels it's their responsibility, since Kredik apparently was the one who sold the property and then allowed the next buyer to turn around and make a $12.2 million profit, there has to be some investigation of how that was able to take place. There has to be some questions asked by elected officials as to who negotiated that, how the turnaround came about so quickly, and who is getting that money. And I would ask again, that that be one of the subjects that the citizens of this town afforded the opportunity to have a public meeting, to hear comments, and have their questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Just want to speak to the parking issue because unfortunately, that is 100% out of our control because back in 2013, as part of the Financial Resolutions Act 47, parking was leased for 40 years to a private entity who sets the hours, the rates within the zones, including downtown and Midtown. And I agree with you, I think it's terrible. But unfortunately, it is out of the hands of this council.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the 1800 block of State Street. This afternoon at 4:00, I called 911 and reported the traffic light at 17th and State was not operational. I went, sat in my car. I waited to see how long it was going to take the police to come and deal with that issue because 17th and State is one of the three busy intersections on State Street. No police showed at all. A half an hour later, someone from engineering showed, and it took him about 10 minutes to fix the light. That's not acceptable. I listened to tires squealing. I watched cars trying to avoid hitting one another because the lights were yellow and red, and nobody wanted to give anybody else the right of way. This is the second time within a two-week period that there's been a problem with that light at 17th and State. During this period of time in which I was waiting for the police, I looked out my rearview mirror, and I saw there must have been an accident at 13th and State. So I saw the police leave. I thought they were going to come up to 17th and State and help with the traffic. They did not. I don't know if it was an issue with the people at the call center or the police. But under no circumstances, between four and five, should the drivers be trying to get across State Street and up and down State Street on their own. That was not acceptable. And, you know, I get a little tired when I hear people talk about State Street being so dangerous. State Street has nothing to do with the fact that trees are not trimmed properly. State Street has nothing to do with the fact that the signage is poor. State Street has nothing to do with the fact that there's no enforcement of illegal parking. State Street has nothing to do with the fact that there's no enforcement of speeding. We need enforcement up there. It's not the street. It's the people that use the street that we have to do something about. Last week, when I was here, and I know the one, a city councilman told, gave me his number to call him back. And the reason I wanted to wait till I got here is because a lot of people in the public want to know the answer to the question that I asked. When is the Treasury Office going to open five days a week? They only allow one person in at a time? They can allow one person in at a time, five days a week. I looked on the calendar for the December 31st. That's on a Friday. There's a lot of people who wait till the last day of the year to pay their taxes. And if Treasury Office is not open on December 31st, there's going to be issues. We need to open up the Treasury Office. That's our, where our revenue comes in at. I'd like to know if the councilman found an answer to that, so the public will know why we can't get in that office and pay our bills five days a week. And the other question I didn't ask, when is the city going back full-time? And the last thing I'd like to say is, thank you. We lost an excellent employee last week, Wayne Martin, who was our city engineer. I'd like to thank him publicly for all of the work he did for the city of Harrisburg and for the time he took to work with the residents. I personally know, when you called him and you could get him, he would respond. And it's a great loss to the city, and I hope him well in all his future endeavors. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my left?
I'd like an answer on that city treasure.
Well, Evelyn, okay.
I believe it was me. I know we talked a lot.
You talked to him, but I can't.
I did mention something to Mr. Miller, and he said he would get back to me with an answer. I have not heard back yet, but I will follow up.
I think it would be great if we had that this part of, will there be a part of the budget question, I imagine, where Mr. Miller could come in and talk about that? I was just saying that having Mr. Miller come in as part of the budget discussions to talk about that.
I believe there was an email sent today that came from Mr. Miller that said that they thought that they would open for more hours over the summer, but due to the Delta variant, they did not extend the hours. They have been discussing it and are having a meeting tomorrow to discuss extending the hours.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Kamiki Campbell, Cheyenne, Harrisburg. Starting off with congratulations to Mayor-elect Williams and to the other members of City Council who retained their seats and to our new council members coming in January. Second, I'd like to kind of refocus the conversation on the beach house a little bit. Part of what I think the initial complaint of the beach house was about, and I don't know if the public got their clarification, was how did the beach house, the project persons, the collaborators, secure a multi-year park permit to use that space? That's what I thought we had talked about a couple of months ago. And so I think in addition to some of the other complaints, that one kind of got lost in the sauce. So is there anyone that could tell us that at some point? How were they able to do that? And is that available for other residents and organizations who want to do something similar in other parts of the city, in some of those public park spaces? And then second thing that I wanted to check in on was the community development, block grants, funding. I know it was tabled, and just if we had an update on that. Again, congratulations, everyone, who were successful in their bids. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, did you want to give us an update on that? Answer the question regarding the beach house?
Sure. So the beach house was negotiated as a proposal from the applicants who built it, which we've done in other things. For example, there's now a 40-year permit, and it's been extended. It was a 10-year permit, extended three times, expiring this December 31st for the houses in Reservoir Park with the Art Association. Some of the arrangements were similar to that, where they committed to improving the property, not with tax dollars, which is what happened to the beach house. And by, so there was no public one that had to be put in to fix it in exchange for the use of the property. And we did it for the marinas. We've done it for many things over the years in the model of the National Park Service. So it was a proposal that came in to the mayor's office, and it was asked, you know, if you're funding it, it's your proposal. We dealt with DCNR. We dealt with all kinds of agencies. We looked at Army Corps of Engineers, which from our view is all the due diligence stuff you do when someone has a proposal. And, but it's a permit system, just like all the other permits are in the City Island area. And, you know, and there was a complaint about liquor, but, you know, I will note that the Susquehanna, Pride Susquehanna has a liquor license associated with it and serves there. The Senators do, the soccer club did, the May. The festival on the riverfront does it, the HU concerts do it. Those are all, so they're all not off the norm of what gets done on a permit for events in the park.
They're not the same, though. The Pride Susquehanna has one they can't serve while they're docked. They can only serve while they're moving.
They serve on the island. I've been there. I've seen it. They serve on the island at events.
You have to get a special permit to serve on the island.
So, but the liquor license loosened up over the time. What LCB has done is loosened up these off-site licenses and affiliations that they have and have allowed others to then affiliate with someone with a liquor license.
Plus, it's a special event license, though, if they're serving on City Island typically.
Well, they're.
The council series has a special event. And I'm telling you, the Pride Susquehanna, I don't think they can serve on while docked unless they have a special event.
Well, that may be. But the, it's a special event permit, but we have most of the rest dressed down doing off-site licenses affiliated with other events that happen off their premises. And it's sort of, the LCB sort of taken a very different approach than they did just even five years ago.
But you had mentioned that a council delegated the authority to issue permits to, I guess, the director of.
To the director with a series of findings.
I haven't been able to find where that would be. Can you give me the citation to the, where we?
Not sitting here, but I can get you the citation to it. You know, we had been through this with a lot. We did a review of every single permit there was six years ago, seven years ago, and how they came to be and what they were. And I will get you that. But it's based on the National Park Service theory that the permits have some temporary duration, but they can be multi-year. But they're limited, you know, they're limited in some ways. We were cited by DCNR three years in a row back in 2000, I think, 10, 11, and 12, or 11, 12, and 13, where they laid out some parameters of what we could and couldn't do in the park system. This is before my time, but that was, that was how they went through them. They dealt with them with their, they literally did a physical survey on City Island as they were doing it. They issued some citations. The city paid those and sought, resolved those and made some adjustments because of that. But it had to do normally with blocking walkways, pathways, access issues to the island as opposed to the buildings that were there. And the use of the buildings are able to be put into, as they did with the Art Association, for a entity's, an entity's use. I mean, that's, you know, and it's been that way for at least 40 years in the city.
So you're telling me the Art Association, is that a profit, is that for profit? I think the beach house is for profit. So is there a fee associated with the beach house?
There's a fee, but it's minimal. I mean, because they're the ones who did the improvements to the building without the taxpayers having to pay for it.
But it's the taxpayer's property.
I understand it's the taxpayer's property.
So there's only a small fee? Are they, is there a monthly fee or yearly fee that they're paying?
I had sent it to you, frankly, I don't remember sitting here.
It's an annual fee.
It's an annual fee.
But just to clarify, this did not go through the normal city channels, correct? It did not go through planning? It did not go through zoning? This was something completely separate? Just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly.
I don't know if planning, zoning would not have waited on it. It's on the city property, so they would not have waited on it. You don't give yourself, your own buildings, a permit, what to do. They do it for tracking purposes with building and codes when they do something. But those things all don't go through every same thing that a general thing would do for other property. So when we were doing the basement here for Eastern University, for example, that wasn't going to be a zoning, that was going to be an improvement for a different type of lease up of a property. But you don't give yourself a lease to, or something, because the appealability of that is to yourself. I mean, that's who it's appealed to. And so that wouldn't be a zoning question.
Right.
No, I understand that. It just seems, it's just odd to me that it didn't go through any, any channel.
No channels.
Right. The only, the only other.
That we're aware of.
Yeah. The only other question that I have, and I guess because of the way that it was viewed through the administration and the Law Bureau, it did not even have to come before City Council because all of us were, received the information, so much of the public, that we didn't have to approve this, this project. It was a park permit, so it never came before council. That's correct.
Right. You don't approve the park permits, and there's been a whole history of that.
And this is different because now you're, this is a property owned by the city of Harrisburg.
All of the island is a property.
Well, you're talking, Art Association, but this is not for profit. It's for the public. This is for a profit, for a profit, and you're utilizing a building that belongs to the city residents. So I have a problem with that. It did not go through the proper procedures. I do not agree. There's something wrong with that.
Well, the only other thing that I'll say to this, and I don't know if anyone else has any comment. A new administration may have a different, have a way to potentially exit, should they choose. I know there are terms in the contract, but.
You most certainly will. I'm certainly going to look at that.
That could be done.
It's like if I'm going to rent out the atrium of here. I just think it was, it was under, the way it was done, it was done sneakily. It was done in a manner that didn't come before City Council, never went through any of the boards. And it's questionable how it was handled.
I understand there's a perception of that. I get that.
The perception is very high and this is a property that belongs to the residents of the city of Harrisburg. This gentleman has renovated a property that belongs to the residents and he is making a financial gain on it where the residents of the city are not getting anything. I want to know what's the annual fee for that. I'm going to look into that. I most certainly will look into that. It's one of the things, that's a priority. Go ahead, Mr. Majors.
Want to think, the contract is a public document, subject to right-to-no request, okay? So then it's $9,000 a year with a 5%, with the ability to increase it up to, I believe it's 5% per year after that. Or is it one, it's actually, I'm looking at the terms of it now, so I can give it to you. 9,000 annually and you have the ability to increase the permit fee up to 5% on permit renewal. So each year it has to be renewed.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Anyone else to my left? You're none other. We're going to move on to courtesy of the floor. I mean, I'm sorry, approval minutes. Approval minutes, let's say session of October 26, 2021. Council members, any admissions, deletions, corrections? Here are none, minutes are staying approved. We move on to reports to committee, we have none. We now move on to ordinance for first reading. Mr. Petrowski, please read Bill 16, 2021, enter record.
Bill 16 of 2021 is an ordinance to technically amend the Municipal Waste, Recycling and Composting Code of Title IX, the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee. We now move on to Bill 17 of 2021.
Bill 17 of 2021 is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg to unnamed grocer's alleys within the block bounded by North Third Street, Clinton Street, Logan Street, Hamilton Street pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
That would also be placed in Public Works Committee. We now move on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. And we move on to ordinance for final passage, we have none. Resolution 79 has been removed from the agenda. We now move on to O Business, council members, any O Business that you would like to discuss? Now move on to new business, council members, any new business you'd like to discuss?
I have some.
Thank you.
I'd just like, Neil, to extend to the mayor's office because we are now entering this period of which this administration will be coming to a close. I'd like to request that if there's any major personnel changes that the mayor intends to make, that he does not make them until he discusses it with council president and or myself.
I will pass on that message. I will note that I met with the mayor the end of last week. He did say he'd be willing to meet with anyone from a transition team. He had staff meet with transition team and committed to trying to make this a smooth event for the people of Harrisburg as we move from one administration to another. So he seemed, I will tell you, sincere in that statement, that, you know, he wants the things to move along. He understands the result of the election and wants to do that, so.
Just want to extend that because I think that's going to be really important, that we don't have any major surprises to contend with.
There's not many left. I just, you know, so.
Any other new business, council members? Okay, Mr. Majors.
Yeah, just a quick note, well, and a reminder that on Saturday, November 20th, will be the city's holiday parade. We encourage folks to come down and participate if they so choose. And then the other question, well, I guess it's a question towards the solicitor and to take back to the administration. I know when we were, throughout COVID, we had talked about policies and to the point that one of our residents brought up, do we have any indication as to when or if everyone has moved back to full-time hours? Are we still in a telework structure? Because I said, I know as a member of council, I don't know if anyone has seen it, whatever the city policy has been with respect to COVID. I know we were talking about ensuring folks were vaccinated, but just want to understand what the posture is of city employees and.
So like everything with COVID, it's a little jumbled? But Harrisburg happened to, and Mr. Woolley and the mayor and others were involved right before COVID, N H R, and coming up with the first telework policy in writing. So that literally had just been put in place before COVID hit. So there are some people that are still working remotely, some for a lot of time, but I believe it's under the telework policy that had been put in place pre-COVID as opposed to COVID. What was never done is the, by an executive order and then by Mr. Woolley's administrator's directive, the building hours were reduced. When you look at the city code, it's actually references to what the hours are. But there is no set business hours in the ordinance. It's what it says, is the Treasury Office shall be open the business hours of the city. They had started to do the thing to lock the door at 2:30 just to keep down the number of contacts with people in the offices with what that was going on. But it's really just going to be an executive action that would change those hours from opening and closing. That's what would mean, a directive would have to be there. You know, whether the mayor is looking to do that, I do not know the answer to that question.
I thought it was closed at 2:30 so they could start the cleaning process.
That may have been originally, but I'm saying, but it's been a year and a half or whatever it's been now. So I don't know, you know, if it's the same process at the end of the day, every day that it was back then. So, but it would take an executive decision in order to change the hours.
Anything else, Mr. Majors?
No.
Okay. Just want to announce to the public that we have an executive session today to discuss legal issues with our solicitor. The other new business I have is that there's going to be a peace walk on Saturday, November 13, 2021, at 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, located in the Hall intersection of Harrisburg. I don't have anything else. Is any other new business, council member? Oh. Council members, if you'd like to be a participant in the holiday parade, please let me know by tomorrow. Anything else? If not, you have adjourned, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting is officially adjourned.